Yeah, but we only have to have, we only have to have four people here.
Oh.
Is that in your contract?
I told you after I was here for the last week that you more desperately needed her.
That's not true.
I think they just really differ.
Yes.
Are you gonna sit, I'll sit.
I'll just sit.
Did you see the memo that I put together?
I thought I saw it at least once.
Okay, I think so.
Sorry.
Well, I'm on my way down.
Oh, I just, I figured when you said yes, I thought.
Anyway, it worked out.
Okay.
Right, Shannon.
Absolutely. I'm not sure what.
It's throwing my ultimatum.
Okay, she says she's gonna be here.
Oh, I'm sitting. I'm throwing stuff around, I don't know why.
I got my eye out.
That's why, yeah, we're positioned just like.
They're open in certain rooms.
Am I right?
Yeah.
The first two. I've probably seen it before.
No, that's why, that's why I gave you.
I believe me a rest.
First of all, I followed it from that point.
I have, I had your stuff out.
Yeah, if you have a mother.
We are ready to roll. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Lakewood City Council. Our agenda for Tuesday, February 19, 2019. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Barth.
Present.
Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
Mayor Anderson has been excused, you have a quorum.
Very good, thank you. Please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence for our men and women serving overseas, followed by our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much, and again, welcome tonight. We are gonna move right into the public comment section of tonight's agenda. As we all know, any member of the audience may comment on items relating to any matter relating to city business or coming before the council under this public comment period. Your comments are limited to three minutes per person, groups may have up to 10 minutes, assuming they consist of at least three members. The light on the podium signals your time to start and your caution time before the trapdoor opens when the light turns red. Tonight, for purposes of the public comment period, we do have a sign-in sheet, but I wanna hesitate, I don't wanna hesitate, I wanna advise people that we do have, under the regular agenda, an actual public hearing on a matter regarding a proposal to adopt regulations relating to creating a quasi-judicial hearing process and addressing certain site-specific rezone code amendments. So if you have public comment related to that, you may wish to, I would prefer you wait until the public hearing portion of the agenda, so we maintain a good, thorough, and adequate record on that item. Other than that, the first person I have on the sign-in sheet for public comment tonight is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen, Lakewood, Washington. That's just, the Trump derangement syndrome among the press has become so bad that they report conflicting stories, but that just shows that there is a wall being built on the Mexican border, and there's all kinds of pots of funds, some of them are boarded on by Democrats and Republicans, so he's got money to build for a while, and then he's going to court, to the Ninth District Court, and then he's going to the appeal court, and then he's going to the Supreme Court to get, I don't know, eight million, eight billion dollars more, whatever, it's real complicated, there's all these pots, but he's gone and researched everything, knows what he's doing. But now, the news media is starting to declare that Trump has manufactured the immigrant problem, but he's always ahead of them, quite a ways, and he organized a lot of the angel parents, and it was very interesting when John Acosta, who's an arrogant CNN reporter, asked him why he's manufacturing this immigration crisis, and he says, "John, turn around and look at those, those mothers back there," and he gathered a whole bunch, group of mothers that have had their, their children killed in one way or another by illegal immigrants. And I put this, I put this thing on your desk here, you know, when somebody makes an action or an inaction, what's the appropriate first question? That is, who is the beneficiary of your actions? So when Nancy Pelosi always said and changed and said, "We don't need a border wall," and basically was against all types of security, who is the beneficiary to that? Well, it's the El Chapo cartel, and just because El Chapo is down, going to jail, doesn't mean there isn't a follow-up organization run by his sons and his brothers, so they're the beneficiary. And then to top things off, special friends, friends of Nancy Pelosi, Denny Heck and Washington A.G., Bob Ferguson, who are supporters of open U.S. borders now, they gotta go down there and help Nancy, you know, she needs some help. With your money, with your money, my money, our tax money, what are the two of them gonna do? But waste our money and time.
Thank you very much. That is the last individual who has signed up to speak during the public, that public comment period, however, that doesn't preclude anyone who would wish to address counsel during this public comment session, so please feel free to come on up. We certainly get lots of comments on Facebook and other social media, so this is your time to do it on the record, come on up. If not, I will declare the public comment period closed. We now move to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council and Clover Park School District Board Joint Meeting of January 28, 2019. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of February 4, 2019. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of February 12, 2019. D, motion number 2019-11, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Humane Society for Tacoma and Pierce County in the amount of $286,000 for the animal sheltering services from February 1, 2019 through December 31, 2020. E, motion number 2019-12, authorizing the execution of agreement with Pierce County for specialized law enforcement services. F, resolution number 2019-04, approving the Wyndham Oaks Final Platte to subdivide 1.84 acres into 15 residential lots with attached dwelling units located at 6141 to 6147, 88th Street Southwest. G, resolution number 2019-05, initiating an intent to amend the official zoning map. H, resolution number 2019-06, authorizing the conversion to and sale of Lakewood Police K-9 Ranger as surplus property. I, items filed in the office of the City Clerk. One, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of November 7, 2018. Two, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of January 2, 2019. Three, Planning Commission meeting minutes of January 16, 2019.
Thank you very much. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any member may wish to remove? Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'd like to remove Resolution Number 2019-04, please.
Very well. Are there any other items which any council member may wish to remove from the consent agenda at this time? Very good, with the exception of Resolution 2019-04, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter and seconded by Councilmember Barth that we adopt the consent agenda minus, at this time, Resolution Number 2019-04. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is adopted. We now move to Resolution Number 2019-04, approving the Wyndham Oaks Final Platte. Is there any further discussion on this? Mr. Bokey.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just, I just had several questions, looking at it, number one, there were some typos in the, in the ordinance itself, because it starts talking about JFCO for the school services, and that clearly would be provided by the Clover Park School District, so there, there was some cut and paste, which concerned me a little bit. I also, you know, we've had a lot of discussion, and usually I'm very much in favor of some level of density in, in smaller lots, but I am interested, because the size of the lots go from 4,500 feet, but a number of them are 1,950 feet, which for Lakewood is, is very small, so I just wondered, is it a PDD, you know, what kind of homes are gonna be on there, what kind of zone, what's the underlying zoning, what are they planning to build there, that, that kind of thing?
The underlying zoning for this project is MR2, mixed residential 2, and the proponents proposing row houses, so there'll be zero lot lines, but there will be individual ownership of the units.
Okay, so there'll be zero, all of them will be zero lot lines, so?
There's four different structure sections that the projects currently be, that are currently being proposed. As a brief history for this, it's cross-ownership as a result of the passing away of the original proponent. Fred Sager from Sager Family Homes is the most recent, Fred Herbert from Sager Family Homes, is the most recent proponent, and they have made some modifications to the building that they're proposing. We haven't received those applications yet, which isn't a requirement of the preliminary plat, but we are anticipating to receive soon after it being approved. Our conversations with them have been for multi-unit structures that have zero lot lines, like row houses, which is similar to what the original project was, but they're proposing a more superior design to community development's standards.
So it's being, so help me understand, so first of all, what, what's allowed in MR2?
Mixed residential, it allows for a variety of commercial and residential uses, as well as multifamily.
Okay, so it, so you could do multifamily or, or something thereabout, so, and then there's, there's the 15 parcels, and then there's parcel 15 that's 9,300 feet, what was that intended to be used for? Is that, will that be its own separate building then, and?
They are proposing to possibly re-subdivide that at a later date and go back before the hearing examiner and before the City Council.
So, so they're not intending to build at least initially on lot number 15?
Not at this time.
And then there's two tracks, one's track B, almost 5,200 feet for stormwater, so they'll have to do their own onsite stormwater, they'll, they'll landscape that.
That's correct.
And then there's a small, little, kinda pocket park thing that'll be their private area, and then you're saying, so, so they'll build, so are we talking like, when you say unit, parcels eight to 14?
So the current, the most recent building that they have proposed, there's one building that spans from 14 to 11, another building that spans from 10 to lot 8, and two buildings between 1 and 7, I'm not sure if they split on 4 or, or not, without having the plans in front of me, but that's been their most recent proposal, each with separate driveways, which is compliant with Public Works' standards.
And then, then they'll be sold as individual?
Yes.
Homes, okay. Do we know the price point at all, the price point? Okay, all right, good, thank you.
So this is a new, Ms. Cassidy, just a couple of questions, is this a new product type? We have not seen this yet constructed in Lakewood, I've seen apartments, I've seen duplexes, we talked about cottage housing, we've got townhomes, this is the first I've seen of row houses.
So row houses is a prime, is a primary permitted use in the MR2 zone, I'm not sure when the last time was that we've had them constructed, not in my tenure, and I, so I would say relatively new for recent history.
Are they typically, and forgive me if I haven't picked up on all the details, but are they sprinkled like we do for the townhome projects we've seen?
Yes, these will be required to be sprinkled.
They will be sprinkled, you said they will be, okay.
Any other further questions? Mr. Branstadter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'm concerned about your briefing us that this is in an MR2 zone, when the packet indicates in the hearing examiner's conclusions that it's an MF1 zone. I'm on page 39, and all the other references are to MF1, and while what's being proposed is consistent with the allowable uses in MF1, I guess I'm, I'm confused about that distinction, because your mentioning MR2 is the only place that it heard MR2 with respect to this, other than, it certainly wasn't mentioned in the packet anywhere.
My apologies, my note was incorrect, and it is, in fact, mixed, multifamily level 1. This is a primary permitted use in the multifamily level 1 zone, I apologize that I didn't share that correctly.
Oh, okay, you know, I, for, I would just point out that it's, that in fact, in MF1, the allowable uses are only single-family residences of this nature, this is, you know, you know, at some point in time in the future, we may wanna consider re-titling this and, as, as R5.
Yeah.
Which is a, a single-family residences with a density of no greater than 22 per acre with no minimum lot size, would, and it would make more sense to someone reviewing the zoning thing than, because you really can't build multifamily buildings, but you can build townhouses so that the lot lines or, or the ownership is the wall.
Right.
But anyway, thank you, I thought I even knew glasses.
Yeah, no, thank you for the clarification.
Any further questions on Resolution 2019-04? If not, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-04?
So moved in a second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Simpson, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt Resolution 2019-04. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2019-04 has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda, first on the agenda are the public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing regarding a proposal to adopt regulations related to creating a quasi-judicial hearing process and addressing site-specific rezone code amendments.
Very good, and for this item, before we open it up for the public comment and public portion of the hearing, Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Tiffany Spear, Special Projects Planning Manager for the city. Starting on page 64 of your packet, there's a brief memo from me that is in response to the conversation had at last week's study session regarding this issue, so that's there, and then beginning on page 70, you'll see the draft ordinance that if the council decides to proceed is currently scheduled for March 4 potential action, but other than that, I'm here to answer questions.
Are there any questions of Ms. Spear before we turn this over to the public for the public hearing? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As the clerk indicated, this is the date set for the public hearing regarding the proposal to adopt the regulations related to creating this quasi-judicial hearing process and for addressing site-specific rezone code amendments. Similar to the rules for public comment, you are invited to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Individual comments are limited to three minutes per person, a total of 15 minutes per topic, absent consideration from the chair. Groups who have a designated speaker may have a total of up to 10 minutes to speak. For this public hearing, we have Mr. Haugen who has signed in.
Dennis Haugen, Lakewood, Washington. Rezoning and all of that's part of planning, and when you're planning, the first question that should be in your mind is where are you going? And then you have to look and, and what you're planning and see if you don't end up in a circular firing squad like just happened in New York with Amazon. You have a huge player in Lakewood, huge, that's totally uncontrolled, that you can't control, you don't have enough information on them, and that's a DSHS. Okay, now, consider, what have we got on both sides of us? Two luxury office buildings that have been built since we became a city. In these welfare programs, it should be the goal to help people get higher and better, but that's impossible if you start to gather all the people that need help in one area, because the jobs, the traffic, and getting to the jobs, getting to better jobs is just not possible for that many people. Case worker, what's their motivation? Is there motivation to get people off the caseload? Or is it motivation to get more people on the caseload? You see? So then what happens to everything you build? Do you know the rules about housing? The next thing you know, you thought you were gonna have a working-class people here, what have you got? People at DSHS is put there. People are very illiterate as to what the rules, the regulations, the goals are going on at DSHS, and you can't find out. And one way not to find out is ask them, want them to come and talk to you. That's gonna take a professional auditor, it's gonna take a Donald Trump, and you don't have that kind of leadership to dig into that. So you plan, you plan, you plan, what's gonna happen 10 years from now? A third of your population, at least, is on food stamps, and most of you don't realize there is no such thing as a food stamp. It's an EBT card, you can get cash off of it. We're even funding the homeless, because you can buy a tent with an EBT card, and then you can get cash. We need to understand that, so we can put it into a formula on how to help people.
Thank you. That is the extent of the individuals who have signed up to address the council during this public hearing. Are there any other individuals who wish to address the council and provide testimony during this public hearing? Any other members of the public who wish to address the council on the public hearing topic? If not, I will declare the public hearing closed. We now turn to reports by the city manager. Before that, is there any unfinished business?
There is none, Deputy Mayor.
Any new business?
No, Deputy Mayor.
Now we get the wonderful opportunity to hear from our city manager.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to first call up our police chief, Mike Zarro, to provide the council an update on fourth quarter 2018 police report.
That's good, I can read that one. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and council members. So this is the time set aside for the police department's fourth quarter report from 2018. A few of the stats in here you'll see are kind of some of the same old things, there's also a few things that were of significance that I wanted to go over and, and talk about with you. So, just starting out, you can see calls for service are, are generally down, and those are from the third quarter, those are our overall calls for service. Arrests, the felony arrests are up, which is notable that calls for service are down and arrests are up. What we've seen is an increase, and you'll see in a second, in aggravated assaults. We actually had four homicides in the fourth quarter, all of a different nature, but arrests for, for each of them. And just a reminder again of the district, of the districts in Lakewood and how they're laid out, starting from the bottom moving up is one through six. And then this is a little different format of the, the calls per district that I've shown you in the past, kind of consolidated some of them and removed some of the, the calls, like the traffic stops that we know are always out there. And as you can see, in many of the districts, the dispatched calls are still primarily domestic violence calls. One thing that I think is of interest is District 5, which is mostly residential, almost exclusively residential, domestic violence calls are second, and actually fewer than some of the other districts that are, have a lot less residential population. And again, as you go through, you can see the, the different types of calls that keep our officers busy. Unwanted persons, those are generally going to be, they could be unwanted house guests, those are transients that are camping on somebody's sidewalk and they'd want them moved along. It, it could be, there's a number of things that could fall into that category, but it's really just what it sounds like, somebody's, somewhere where they're not wanted. And then the incidents reported for the fourth quarter, and also with a year-to-date comparison, and given it's fourth quarter, it's a year-over comparison, the one, I think, in all, there's a decrease from year to year, 17 to 18. The one category that I mentioned was aggravated assaults, and you see from, at least, from year to year, there's a slight increase, and then from fourth quarter 17 to fourth quarter 18, also a significant jump, and a lot of that has to do with gun crimes that we're seeing. Simple assaults, which in the past have dominated, you know, a lot of the persons crimes, are actually down from fourth quarter 17 to fourth quarter 18. And one other item that I wanted to touch on was vandalism, and as you can see, there's an increase there from year to year, fourth quarter to fourth quarter is a slight decrease. And I talked to our crime analyst about what would be, you know, fallen or vandalism and maybe account for some of that. We have seen an increase in graffiti, and that's one of the things also that, minor vandalism, where there's no suspect, that can be reported online, so a lot of citizens can go and report some of those things online, so it, it essentially makes it easier to report, and also if, you know, somebody's car gets broken into, they might go and report that online as a vandalism, when it might have been more true to call it a vehicle problem.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Explain to me counterfeiting, because I always think, I mean, I realize there's 100 and crime, counterfeit crimes, clearly that's not money, but, I mean, what, what is?
It, it, it can be money, we, you'd be surprised at how many, how many calls we still get for people making bad, or fake and bad. Unwanted persons, those are generally going to be, they could be an unwanted house guest, those are transients that are camping on somebody's sidewalk and they'd want them moved along. It could be, there's a number of things that could fall into that category, but it's really just what it sounds like, somebody's somewhere where they're not wanted. And then the incidents reported for the fourth quarter and also with a year-to-date comparison and given it's fourth quarter, it's a year-over comparison. The one, I think, in all, there's a decrease from year to year, seventeen to eighteen. The one category that I mentioned was aggravated assaults. And you see from at least, from year to year, there's a slight increase, and then from fourth quarter seventeen to fourth quarter eighteen, also a significant jump, and a lot of that has to do with gun crimes that we're seeing. Simple assaults, which in the past have dominated, you know, a lot of the persons' crimes, are actually down from fourth quarter seventeen to fourth quarter eighteen. And one other item that I wanted to touch on was vandalism. And as you can see, there's an increase there from year to year, fourth quarter to fourth quarter is a slight decrease. And I talked to our crime analyst about what would be, you know, fallen or vandalism and maybe account for some of that. We have seen an increase in graffiti, and that's one of the things also that minor vandalism, where there's no suspect, that can be reported online. So a lot of citizens can go and report some of those things online. So it essentially makes it easier to report. And also, if, you know, somebody's car gets broken into, they might go and report that online as a vandalism when it might have been more true to call it a vehicle prowl.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Explain to me counterfeiting, because I always think, I mean, I realize there's a hundred and crime, counterfeit crimes, clearly that's not money, but, I mean, what is it?
It can be money. We, you'd be surprised at how many, how many calls we still get for people making bad or fake and bad money, counterfeit bills. It's, usually when you look at them, it's pretty obvious that they're fake. But people still get them and still call us, and it's, in this day and age, it's kind of a surprise to still get those kind of calls, but we do.
And so, and then burglary, a great, really another very good year in burglary, and I always talk about that, but I noticed there's a big uptick in the fourth quarter. Anything that that can be attributed to?
Possibly cold weather. People, you know, even if you break into an abandoned or vacant house, that's considered burglary. I don't know that that's the case, but that could certainly be one explanation for it. All right. Overall, as you can see, I think a fairly, you know, fairly positive move statistically with crime. And, you know, even looking at person crime by quarter from sixteen till now, you know, you see your, you know, pretty consistent upticks during the second and third quarters when the weather's nice. And property crimes, fairly flat, I would say, overall. And then total crimes, a slight up increase from the third quarter of eighteen, but again, I talked about the increase in aggravated assaults, which I do think led to the overall increase here, definitely contributed to it. That being said, you can look going back to first quarter two thousand sixteen, this is still one of the lowest quarters. And then collisions, we always track those, and, you know, again, in the fourth quarter, when the weather turns bad, we always see a spike, and this, this fourth quarter was no different. Still a little lower than, well, not a little, about forty-five collisions lower than fourth quarter in seventeen, which is definitely moving in the right direction, and I think is a product of some of the road work that's been done in Lakewood to where, you know, the roads are just safer and there's not, not the construction going on. And then total crime in Lakewood, this is one that, just to track it over a little longer period for the last four years, I can, I think it kind of speaks for itself is that it's just been up and down. And hopefully it continues to go on the way down. Now, here's one of the things I really wanted to get to and talk about. I remember that I presented to the council, I think maybe for the third quarter report, we're going to be doing a retail theft emphasis in the town center and the business districts. What that entailed was having a much more visible presence, booking people into jail as opposed to citing and releasing or just taking a report, and working with the stores to say, hey, if you find people, we are going to be out actively working on these. You know, some of them have varying policies related to their tolerance for theft, so they may or may not call, but we encourage them to call during this period. And with eighty-five hours of overtime and forty-two bike patrol hours, which I think was one of the, probably the bigger components of this, because a lot of people saw our cops out on bikes throughout this October, November, and December time period. And in fact, one retailer, Old Navy, said that they actually saw a bunch of thieves with about $4,000 worth of merchandise heading in their arms, heading for the door, and they saw two of our guys ride by on bicycles, and they dropped all the stuff right inside the door and took off. So definitely evidence right there, I mean, real hard evidence that, that the program was effective or having that increased presence there was effective. And then the, this is something else that we looked at, is the shoplifting comparisons for seventeen and eighteen. And noting specifically going from October, November, December, if you look at seventeen, it is a steady incline all the way through the end of December. In fact, a sharp incline once you get to December. There is that incline through November, and that's about after, you know, the first month of the emphasis, and then a sharp decline into December, which, you know, I don't know if that would be coincidence or not, but I think it's worth, you know, it's worth looking at further next year when we do it again. The one number that I should have also looked into are vehicle prowls during that time period, because typically what we see when the parking lots are full and people are out shopping is an increase in vehicle prowls, and I didn't, I forgot until just now that that would be something worth tracking as well during that time period. But I do think that this demonstrates an effectiveness of the theft emphasis. And I'll want to give credit to Sergeant Pete Johnson with our property crimes unit. He's, he's the one that came and said that he really thinks doing something like this would work, and asked to put it together, and here you go. So you can expect to see this again next year, or this year, I should say, just because I think it was worthwhile, if nothing else, the positive feedback we got from our community members, just seeing officers out on bikes during that time period, I think was worth it. So moving on, one of the other new things that we have here in this quarterly report are the calls for service at adult family homes. And what you see listed on the right in those two charts are all the adult family homes listed in Lakewood. In fact, I think there might have been four added since this chart was made, five added since this chart was made, maybe six since I started talking, I'm not sure. So, and as you look through, you can see there's, you know, varying numbers for different, different locations, five hundred and some total police and fire calls for service. And one of the things, when we went down the other day and testified, these aren't, what I tried to emphasize is, these aren't, these mini institutions that the state is creating require intensive management. They're not, they're not maintenance-free, and if they were, we wouldn't have such a high volume of calls between the police and fire to go there. These are, much like we used to do with the mobile homes and bars and the apartments when they were the problem, well, adult family homes have supplanted those as the institutions that requiring the most service. So what we did is look at the adult family homes and kind of brought you the top ten requiring calls for service throughout the year. The left is fire calls for service, and on the right is police calls for service. The reason it stops at eight or seven is because after that, it's an eighty-three-way tie for, with one, or something like that, for police calls. Then again, this is the fourth quarter only. And you can see the Woodville, you see that up there twice, these are, these are corporations that are running, you know, different locations with clients in them. So we continue to have conversations with DSHS about the best way to manage these. One of the big concerns I have, or one of the things that's problematic for us, is how the clients and the calls we go to, how we apply the domestic violence laws. Because the domestic violence laws require an arrest if there's two adults residing together and we've established probable cause that one assaulted the other. And that's problematic when you're dealing with people that have, you know, maybe diminished capacities. The officers can, are essentially left to choose between doing what's right and doing what's lawful, and that's kind of a tough spot to be in.
Go ahead. Yep, Mr. Bokey and then Mr. Bransley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Do we know what's going on at that Woodville one, that they would have eight calls to a residence?
I suspect that is one of the DS, remember, these, the ninety I showed you is the array of adult family homes. They don't all take DSHS releases. I suspect that this is one that takes mostly DSHS releases, and I think some of this you'd see is how they're managed as well, and how the staff are trained or not trained.
Chief, the previous slide that showed total calls for service, and for instance, and I look at the last two are the Woodville numbers, and the numbers on this slide don't add to the numbers on this slide. Is there some double counting or?
This slide is the fourth quarter only, the previous slide is for the entire year.
So this is an annual?
This, with all the nine, yes, these are calls for the entire year.
Okay, and the slide that you're showing us now is?
And this one is fourth quarter only.
Fourth quarter. So compared to Western State Hospital, if you add in, say, that we've got ninety homes with six residents per home capacity, you know, five hundred and forty residents, how does the call for service for those five forty compare per resident, per patient with Western State Hospital? Is it, are we actually responding more between, and I miss, I'm mostly concerned about the police calls for service because we've never really tracked, and I don't think West Pierce gives that many calls to Western States because they have a lot of medical staff.
Right.
So what's the, if we, if we try to look at that and say, these are institu, these are institutional settings within the community, that do these five hundred and forty beds generate more police calls for service per capacity, or does Western State Hospital generate more?
Right, I can, we can certainly look that up. I don't know the definitive answer offhand, but I could go out on a short limb and tell you that we go to adult family homes much more often, even on a per patient, patient or per client basis than Western State Hospital.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Well, while you're on that short limb, I have a question here. You mentioned, you talked a little bit about officer calls to these adult family homes with regard to domestic violence. And that raises a question. I think of domestic violence, I think of something that happens in a home. When I think of adult family homes, I think of a business. Therefore, wouldn't the assault in the business be assault, an assault and not domestic violence?
No, it's essentially they're residing there. So that's the difference, yeah.
Just thought, thank you.
Yeah, I just have a comment too. I mean, this is very helpful and interesting information, you know, anecdotally, when my father in Spokane was getting older and had some issues, and we had a fair number of calls for service at the house. But from a public impact standpoint, lifelong taxpayers of one single-family residence, husband and wife, you know, you kind of amortize the bond levy revenue, all sorts of stuff that you would pay for fire and police.
Right.
And it makes some sense, but when you congregate, because state law and federal law allows it, to have up to six, perhaps eight, if a certain legislative member gets her way in one home, it unduly burdens the system beyond which the levying capacity of the fire district or perhaps our own ability to charge a commercial business, which we can't say it is, but we know it is, is costing impact. You know, one wonders whether we can figure out a way on the next legislative agenda, perhaps next year, to figure out, is there a community policing impact akin to what we're doing with Western State? Or a licensing fee that we can tag on to our business license that we do here that accommodates this impact? Because there's a real impact that you're showing to me.
Right.
And then what we'll talk about at the end when we have comments, there are a lot of citizens that are, you know, the one thing that they will tell me is they very much appreciate our Lakewood Police Department, they think we're doing good work, but statistics sometimes belie perception, and a lot of them would tell you through me that they would love to see more police presence on the streets. You know, roving patrols either for speeding purposes or in the central business district to accommodate just a better presence. But we can't do that as much as we may like if we're responding to an increased need in the adult family home community. So there's got to be a way we can say, this has a cost, there has to be a non-discriminatory way to assess and charge that cost, because they are adult family homes, right, under the Federal Fair Housing Act. But there's got to be a way to think through this noodle because it's having a financial impact on our resources, which impacts all of the city in terms of.
Absolutely, and it's, and I'll give you one direct impact is on our assessment from South Sound 911. They go by calls for service.
Right.
To determine what we're charged.
There you go.
So that's something you could look at, and, you know, when you talk about the comparison with your, your father's place. Your family wasn't getting $10,000 a month to, you know, house him either, like the adult family homes are. So in addition to, you know, drawing on these services, they're actually making a significant amount of money. So it's, there's absolutely more we can do, and I, I hope we can get there, but we just have to keep fighting.
This is really helpful because I think the city manager's thought process, I know he's ten steps ahead of us all the time, but this may be some fodder for another look at this issue when we get to the legislative agenda next year, because I, you know, it's a problem.
And, well, this is the first time, obviously, it's, up until the last couple of years, it wasn't something that was on our radar, but this is the first time we've really took this heart of a look at, at the data, and we'll be able to track it for the next legislative session.
Right.
We'll have a better, you know, just history of data to look at.
It may be worth looking at, on the city attorney's side and the city manager's side, whether we can do anything in our business licensing code that, you know, we charge people for false alarms, which is a legitimate business response to single-family residences in a non-discriminatory sort of way.
And that's, you know, that's a, that's a great example of addressing an issue that was a drawn resources, because we used to, you know, respond to, you know, I don't know however many thousands of false alarms a year, but we instituted a new program with new alarm requirements and new permitting requirements, and our, the calls for service that officers have had to go to for false alarms have plummeted. So it's something like that, that if we, you know, keep working at it, there, that's how we need to address it, figure out a way to.
Mr. Caulfield, you had a comment there?
I'd just like to add that, you know, all of these are great ideas, however, the city alone is prohibited from implementing them, so all of them would have to run through the state legislature.
Even our business licensing code?
We have zero authority to regulate in any shape, form, or manner adult family homes. If we could, if you had a business license, it would have to be applied to everybody. It's like, I'll use a real simple example.
It may be something to think about, because those that don't have the extraordinary calls for service.
Would have to apply to everybody.
Right. Worth the thought. Anyway, I throw it out there, but I get where you're coming from, because we've been noodling on this for a long time.
But then, and then the fee would have to tie to a tangible service that businesses are receiving as well.
Do you guys provide a tangible service?
Possibly a nuisance fee, but that.
Do you guys provide a tangible service?
We touch people all the time.
Okay.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, the alarm example is a good example. The alarm industry, their business model was based upon getting free police presence. That was their model. So they, they got a monthly payment, and then anytime something came up, they could call the police for free, no charge, oh, it's a false alarm, so what? It's on the city or the county. And this model is the same, right? It's, we're going to increase the institutionalization, the level of care in this business, and the state sees it, and like, hey, we'll pay more so you can take care of these much more difficult cases, and, oh, but we get all these services for free because we essentially are paying what a single-family home would do, which might have two calls in a person's lifetime. Probably the average home probably has, what, two calls in a couple decades? There might be other apartment buildings and whatnot that we've seen that have more calls than that, but.
My family was above average.
And your family's above average, and that happens, right? And that has been put into the model of both the police and probably the fire. But nobody has this in their model, that the state of Washington will get free police presence and fire presence, you know, so... Along with Pierce Transit is always in my neighborhood too, so...
Well, you know, who knows? Maybe it's a conversation we formulate for next year as part of what we do with community policing, whether Western State or within the adult family home community, sponsored in part by our friends at Western State or DSHS. Something to think about.
All right.
Keep going. Thanks.
So some of the fourth quarter analysis, as I mentioned earlier, we had four homicides in the fourth quarter and all tragic. The most... I mean, I don't want to say the most tragic, but the ones that hit you the most are the... with children. And there was a young infant that was murdered by her father. Very difficult case for the detectives to work. Detective Bull, Chris Bull, was the one that had this. And he had to sit through a lot and look at and work through a lot of very tough material to get to an arrest on this, and he did. And I'm, you know, proud that we got there. I hate that we had to in the first place, and I hate that our officers and detectives had to go through that. We had the New World homicide, which, as you know, made the news yesterday because we arrested the police and Portland arrested the fifth of six suspects. So there's still just one outstanding. Again, more just outstanding police work by some of our detectives and our partners down in Portland on the FBI task force. And believe it or not, one was picked up in Hawaii like two weeks ago. He'd actually been laying low there in a hostel for, you know, since the homicide. Yeah, just go figure. But five of the six in custody and the business is still closed. The third one was off of Meadow Road where one... I don't really know if you could consider it intentional or accidental, but one guy shot his friend and his friend died. And he initially called it in as a suicide and staged the scene, so... But again, not really a whodunit. And then the last was Mr. Nitschke at the adult family home. And then we talked about adult family homes and the phlebotomy program. I just wanted to include because we... The Washington State Traffic Safety Commission, you know, recognized or at least put out the information about this, that we had 272 blood draws for the year. Pierce County added several more, and Tacoma PD is actually adding four. And with Tacoma, there will be twenty-seven total in Pierce County, which is fantastic. We are looking at, you know, other, you know, regions are looking at the model. And we would really like for other entities throughout the state to follow. And I think some of them are. We just need to kind of spread out more. Some positive notes. We had some retireings and hirings and promotions. And Angel Figaro and Ray Penzallan both retired after long careers. Both, you know, well-deserved retirements. Angel just retired-retired. And Ray is actually working for the AG's office doing like fraud investigations or something like that that doesn't sound like it's worth retiring to, but Ray enjoys it. And then several people that we hired. Alex Lobzov, who's a core compliance officer. Savannah Brown, who you met, is up at the academy. Josh Beecham and Josh Northcutt, who were two laterals that we hired. And then promotions, Detective Karen Harret and your very own Charles Porsche back there in the back of the room. And just, again, a lot of positive things at the end of the year there to go with some of the negative stuff. Now, the next series of slides isn't really a fourth quarter item, but it's some things that I had been researching over throughout the past year that I thought was worth sharing. And some of it speaks to the environment that we're in in Pierce County and that your officers are working in. It just... one of the things anecdotally that I've always heard since we started as a department from the people that came from other departments outside Pierce County was that everybody down here has a gun. To them, it just seemed like there were guns everywhere. And I finally just thought, "Well, I wonder if that's true". So one of the things I did was talk to the director of the ATF for this region and asked how they... what types of firearm sales can they track? And he said, "The only thing that they track are groups of multiple firearm sales". So if, like, a gun shop buys a bunch or any dealer, federally licensed dealer buys multiple firearms, they keep track of those. And I asked, you know, what he could provide me on that based on county. And you can see Pierce County isn't too far behind King County and we're, you know, more than double Thurston County in those numbers. And then I asked about what... yes, sir.
Is that number of sales of multiple firearms or is it number of firearms?
Number of sales.
So thirty-five hundred sales of multiple firearms average?
That, I don't know.
Are we talking thirty-five thousand?
I don't know. He didn't have that number. I think they're pretty limited on what they can track, but that this is what he could give me.
This is a number of purchases, essentially wholesale purchases by somebody?
That's kind of how I... I think that's a fair way to interpret that.
Aren't retail sales tracked, Chief? So if I go in with my permit, whatever permit you get, and you go buy a gun at Bullseye Gun Store, someone tracks that, I would think.
Right, maybe by business.
Yeah.
But I wasn't looking into it like that detailed. I thought, you know, just an overall county picture would be easier to just kind of get a number of guns that might be out there comparatively.
Probably higher than this.
And then I looked at, you know, how many firearms are taken into our property room compared to others? And this, for 2017, and this was year-to-date 2018, you could see that our property room, and this... To pick these agencies, I just asked our property room manager, Erica Meeks, to call the counterparts that she knows that she could get good information from. I didn't tell her which agencies. I just said, "Whoever you know that might be in a similar-sized agency", and this is what she came back with. So you can, I mean, comparing to some pretty big agencies that, you know, Kent, Renton, and Federal Way are all bigger than us. And, you know, you wouldn't think have any reason to be less busy than us, but we are taking in more firearms than they are.
Educate us about what it means to book a firearm into the property room? Is that because it was on one's person when they were picked up for a misdemeanor or felony?
It could be any reason. It could be somebody comes in and surrenders one because they're... they had a relative pass away and they had these guns. They just wanted to give them up. It could be that they were arrested with them. It could be that they were used in a crime and taken as evidence. For whatever reason, the property room took in these guns. And remember, my goal at the start was to kind of confirm this anecdotal information that people seem to think, you know, are perceiving that there's guns everywhere down here.
This could be something we could drill down for the future and actually annotate on a form. This is turned in by a relative of a deceased person, this one was...
Well, I probably could now, yeah, absolutely. I don't know about for the other agencies.
Right.
But for us, we certainly could. But keep in mind too, we're looking at, you know, our violent crime rate with Tacoma and us and Pierce County in general compared to the rest of the state, so... And then, looking more at some of the, kind of the environment, I started thinking, "Well, I wonder how that relates to crime"? And one of the things that contributes to crime are number of criminals. And so I called the supervisor for this region of DOC and asked for sort of a point-in-time count of people on active DOC in the middle of December, whenever I called them. What Department of Corrections?
Well, I get that piece, but what is active?
But they're on active supervision. These are people that are on probation for something, but they're actively being supervised by the Department of Corrections. And this is the count that I received from DOC. So, and also keeping in mind, the population disparity between us and King County is significant as well. But we're still pretty close. And then looking at the data per thousand population, when you look at either guns booked per year or active DOC or gun sales, with the exception of gun sales, we lead pretty much everything. And the only ones that outpace us for gun sales is Thurston County. And I think a lot of that might have to do with the military, but that's still, you know, the guns are in the environment. Now, one of the other things that I had also been sort of researching at the same time is it seemed like line-of-duty deaths by gunfire were, you know, when you... You didn't see them on the news happening in other places in the Northwest. It seemed like it was around here. So I went back for 25 years and looked at data on line-of-duty deaths by gunfire only. That's not accidents in a vehicle, this is gunfire only. And if you look at the last 25 years, this is what I found. Pierce County, as a percent of total, when you look at a three-state area, Oregon, Idaho, and Washington, is twenty-five, almost 25% of the officers killed in line-of-duty by gunfire. If you look at the last 15 years, that goes up to 35%. Now, I bring this up for a couple of reasons. One, because it was kind of shocking and eye-opening to me. And I thought it was worth sharing. But I also like to, you know, it's worth talking about the environment or noting the environment that our officers are working in. And this is it. So somebody having a gun is a very real possibility for our officers, and somebody using one is a very real possibility for our officers. And when you have a, an environment where you have a lot of guns and a lot of DOC offenders, oh, and by the way, a lot of mentally ill people, one of the byproducts of that could be what you're looking at right here. The other reason I bring this up is sort of to dovetail off the work in our... We've been doing on adult family homes. The fights that you're taking up with the state are worth it because what the state does to and has done historically to Lakewood and Pierce County has an effect on public safety. And this, I firmly believe this is one of the byproducts of the state dumping offenders and mentally ill into our communities. And then you add on top of that a proliferation of firearms. It's, you know, it's not unpredictable what would happen. You get an increase in violent crime and also an increase in line-of-duty deaths. So on that somber note, that is my fourth quarter report. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Questions on the right side? Questions to my left? Ms. Barth?
Chief, when you were down in Olympia testifying, was this some of the information that you provided to the legislators?
This part, no. I wasn't... no, I focused more on... I did talk about the calls for service and the impact that had. I didn't bring this up. I didn't necessarily take that as my time to poke my finger in the DSHS's eye. I kind of was focusing more just on the legislation that was being proposed, which was specifically adult family home-related. But given the chance, if somebody wants to listen, I'd be happy to tell them what, you know, talk about what the state, the impacts the state's decision has on public safety in general.
Thank you.
Just a couple of follow-up questions. So given the success of the bike patrol during the October, November, December timeframe, given what I've heard, maybe others have heard, is the desire to multiply that presence within the central business district? Is there kind of an articulated plan that's coming out that you're chewing on that might enhance police presence, patrolling activities, either in the neighborhoods, central business district, elsewhere?
Not a specific plan, but I can tell you our bike unit, you'll be seeing them out more this year, obviously, throughout the year, not just during the retail theft emphasis period. Lieutenant Alwine is running the bike unit. And he demands a certain amount of hours per month from every person on the bike unit, rain or shine. So you didn't see anybody out last week. I told him I was disappointed. But you will see that, especially during the summer, you'll see that more consistently. And I know that, you know, one other... I guess it sort of has to do with presence, but the one thing that I didn't include, but I got some data late, was on abatements in the fourth quarter. And of note were, you know, six abatements in the business district all along Lake Grove and 99th Street where it was, there were these vacant houses that were just magnets for problems. Those were baited and raised, so that, we will see a difference there. And I think that all has to do with some city presence as opposed to just police presence and taking some action.
Got it.
But in general, you will. I mean, I hope to have a lot more presence out with the caveat that, you know, we have a shooting or something like that, that takes people away from proactive patrol.
How about, I got a kind email today from a constituent who was questioning our ability to have more speeding...
I saw that as well.
Yeah.
I can tell you, we are out there. We go out and I... Sergeant Frazier's in charge of our traffic unit. He enjoys his job. And when he goes out there and comes back and says, you know, "People are doing pretty good along there", I write some tickets, "But people are doing pretty good", and on top of that, we have the speed studies that say the average speed is 31 miles an hour. It's, you know, it's kind of hard to know what to do with that.
Yep, well, I know what I'm going to do with that email, so I've got a plan. It'll be in the suburban times soon.
If it feels good after you sent it, you shouldn't have sent it.
Yeah, right. Believe me, it'll feel good. Last question, approach to unwanted persons. I know that's a category under the activity there. So what do we tell people about the folks that are lingering in crate and trash and nuisance at places like QFC? What do we do in there? I know the public, or excuse me, the private property owner has to affirmatively have the no trespass order so you guys can do something. Then someone has to call it in. But be that as it may, it's still a presence issue. What's our thought there?
Well, it is. And some of the, I mean, it all comes down, we go to those all the time. We show up, we tell people, "Look, the owner doesn't want you here, move along", and they move. We rarely have an occasion where we show up and tell somebody, "The owner doesn't want you here, you need to move", and they say, "I'm not going anywhere".
And if they were to say that, what do you do?
Then they go to jail for trespassing. And we deal with their shopping carts full of stuff and try and figure out what to do with that.
Got it.
Legislation worth watching, though, is, I can't think of the bill number offhand, is basically decriminalizing trespass for homeless people on private property if you have a business that's accessible to the public.
Very good. Will, Mr. Pokie?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I want to go back to the very beginning when you were going through the crime stats and you give it to us by district. But if you can, if you know, break it down. Are there areas that, of the city, that have become more troublesome? And are there areas that have become less troublesome? And if you can, then can you kind of fill us in as to maybe why?
I wouldn't say there's some that, I mean, have become, if you look at, you know, a years-long sample of calls for service, I wouldn't say that there's any one district that has, you know, inordinately gone up. The ones that have been up historically have stayed up. Even if, you know, citywide numbers are down, the high points for those years are still those same districts. You know, I hate to say it, but, you know, the Oakbrook, because of the adult family home issue, has sort of spiked, but we know why. It's because of the adult family home issue. But now, there isn't one neighborhood where I can say, "All of a sudden, they're spiking". It's the ones that have been high for years remain, just stay high for years. And I don't really have a good answer for why that is.
Do you ever catch folks, I mean, you talked about guns, and I really do appreciate the information on that, as terrifying as it is. Have you been able to catch people who are selling guns illegally? Have you had any good success with that?
No, I mean, not selling them illegally. Usually, they end up in the wrong hands through theft. And then they, you know, one criminal steals it and then it gets handed from, you know, or traded for dope from one criminal to the next. So it's, they're... One of the, one of the illegal ways that they can buy them is through straw purchases, which is where they have somebody that can buy a gun legally, go in and buy it for them and then give it to them. Those are hard to track down and trace because... Those are hard to track down and, and trace, because it, it just is, to find out, okay, who bought it for them, and, and was the intent to buy it, and then give it to them. But there aren't, like, gun dealers out there. There's, you know, we run into drug dealers who might have, might trade dope for guns, and then...
And you did have that one bust over in Parkland that was significant.
And it was like eighteen or nineteen guns there, and that's what the guy told us, is that, "Yeah, I, you know, I take those in and trade for dope."
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks much.
Thank you.
Just a few more updates, Deputy Mayor. First off, tomorrow, I think it's tomorrow evening, the Clover Park School District over at Lockburn is having an evening on STEM. And so, several employees from our Public Works Engineering Department are gonna go over and share their stories and the opportunities of what it's like to work in the world of The Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration Event, which is a huge success every year, the committee is looking at changing it up in 2020. First and foremost, they're looking to move it to Saturday, February 1st, to not only celebrate Dr. King, but also to use that as an opportunity to get the community more involved for February, which is Black History Month. And so, they've been having those discussions, they wanted us to pass that on to the mayor and the council. Again, the event would be on Saturday, February 1st, and the title would be Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration Honoring Black History Month. The new theme would be "The Dream and the Valuing of Human Life," and the essay question for the students would be, "How does the civil rights movement today enhance the value of, of humanity?" And that actually, that theme came from some survey and that the committee undertook with some, with some students. So, they're very, very excited about kind of the change-up here, and they're also looking forward to continuing the event, and actually, at Harrison Prep, they thought that that venue was actually a, a, a good place to be as opposed to the McGavick Center. Lakewood's Choice, I think we're all familiar with Lakewood's Choice over in the, in the Springbrook neighborhood, they have approached the city requesting that we be their fiscal agent for their grant that they'll be receiving on July 1st. They receive a grant from the state every two years, it's $220,000 or $110,000 a year. They have asked the city for two reasons. First and foremost, Pierce County, which is their current fiscal agent, has decided no longer to do that, they have actually eliminated that program from their service line. And the second reason is just the great partnership that we have with Lakewood Choice. The city would be compensated for providing its services, about eight percent of the grant, so about $8,800. We estimate that that would be more than enough to accommodate the time and resources that, for example, our human services coordinator, and perhaps our park and rec director would have. And then, just, you know, the great things that they do in the community, and, and the grant is actually evidence-based substance abuse prevention strategies, and I, you know, the Lakewood's Choice, they have a number of partnerships here in our community, and certainly, my recommendation would be that we do this. If the council's so inclined, what I'd like to do is bring forward an, an agreement for council review and consideration as part of your regular meeting on, on March 4th. And the reason being is because we'd like to get this in place sooner rather than later, so that they, they have some certainty here. Also, one of the conversations that we've been having with them is that Lakewood Choice focuses not just on the Springbrook neighborhood with these funds, since we'll now have a, a role here, but also other parts, underserved parts of our community, such as Tilikum and maybe some other areas as well. So, I just wanted to kind of give, give council kind of a bit of a warning order here, that, that this opportunity exists, and unless they hear any objection from the council, I'm hoping that we could bring this forward again as part of a, a, a consideration, action item at your next regular meeting. And so, Deputy Mayor?
It goes good with that? Okay.
Thank you. And just real quick, as part of council's calendar, tomorrow evening, the Community and Economic Development Department will be hosting, yeah, tomorrow's Wednesday, an open house regarding the Shoreline Management Plan at 5:30, prior to the planning commission meeting here, here in the council chambers. On Thursday, there's a couple of items happening. The first is PCRC is having their General Assembly meeting over in Puyallup, and actually, the city will be recognized for its sub-area plan with a platinum, Healthy Communities Platinum Award from the Tacoma-Pierce County Health Department. And then also, that same evening, over at the Tacoma Country and Golf Club, the Pierce County Military and Business Alliance will be hosting Air Force Major General Sam Barrett's Civic Leaders Reception. I know all of you have been invited to that, and so, he is commander of the 18th Air Force, so you have a couple of options to choose from on Thursday evening.
Should we be RSVPing to you guys on that?
Yes, yes, and there is a, and there is a cost for the latter item of $20, so...
The door, or?
Say again?
This point is probably at the door, is that all right?
I, I believe so. If you, if, here's the deal, if you want to go, let us know, we'll RSVP on your behalf, and then we'll coordinate that for you.
Got it. Okay.
I will not be at PCRC, I'm actually at the University of Washington Seattle, meeting with some students at the same time, so. But I know a couple of staff will be at, at PCRC, but Councilmember Bokey, if you're there, you'll be up to actually receive the award on behalf of the city, okay?
That'd be great.
And then on Saturday, the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center's annual event has been rescheduled and moved to Saturday over at the Tacoma Dome. The following week, next week, on, on Wednesday, the 27th, the, the Pierce County Executive is gonna continue the dialogue on PC, PSRC Regional Engagement, and that'll be over at the Pierce County Annex, and that'll be from 6:30 to 8:00. And then, next Thursday, the Boys and Girls Club is having their annual South Puget Sound Legacy of Hope event at the Hotel Murano in downtown, downtown Tacoma. And then, the Father-Daughter Dance has been rescheduled to March 1st, because apparently there was a little bit of snow a couple of weeks ago. And then, on the legislative front, in terms of the city's priorities, we are moving forward. Late last week and yesterday, we received a, we were able to get a letter together with all six of our state legislatures signing on in support of the community policing partnership that we have with the state, that the governor has included in his budget, so that's good. Likewise, we have support from all six state legislators for our funding for the Amtrak Station Assessment, and we have sent that on to the federal delegation, because our federal delegation is looking at providing a letter of support, too, so that's actually quite huge. And so, those are moving forward. We have direct sponsors for our two capital budget requests, and then the Military Benefit Zone, we are working through the process. I think as this body is aware, part of that is to, you know, allocate a portion of the state's sales tax, and come to find out, there's a number of bills that have been proposed like that. And so, both the House Finance Committee and the Senate Ways and Means Committee, I understand, kind of lining them all up, and gonna be either drawing the line or selecting which ones they want to, want to move forward. The next key date is this Friday, is close of business, is cutoff for policy bills, though we would take the position that the Military Benefit Zone is NTIB necessary to implement the budget, since it does have an impact on the budget, but we'll see, it's the prerogative of the state legislature whether or not they want to move those forward. So, that's, that's, and then, we've been very, very actively engaged on a number of bills specific to the adult family homes, and we will continue to do so. So, that's, that's where we are. So, Deputy Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions with Mr. Coffield on the report? If not, we'll go to council comments. Ms. Moss? Good. Mr. Bokey?
As I mentioned earlier, I'll be at the PCRC meeting, I don't know who else is coming along, so, I can't even remember who the speaker's gonna be, and you signed me up, so, that's done.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it for me.
Very good. Mr. Branstadter?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I will, on Thursday, I will go to the PCRC meeting, and additionally, that day during the day, I'm gonna go to the Urban Studies Forum at UWT, and it's, it's a, it's a focus on learning from other cities, so I'll see how that goes, but that's usually a, an interesting thing that parallels the agenda at the PCRC, at, at some times, to be able to go and do that. And then on Saturday, I'll be participating at the, the Patriotic Day, the Massing of the Colors at Stadium High School, that a lot of military and veterans and our junior ROTC units have participated in. It's a good event every year. That's all I have, Mr.
Ms. Barth? You good? I knew you were good, but do you have any comments? Okay. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thursday morning, we'll see me in here with a group of 31 students from Heritage Christian School for a little bit of introduction to municipal government. And then, this past Friday, Chief Sharp, Chief Zaro and I were testified in favor of Steve O'Ban's Senate Bill 5038, and I thought that went fairly well. I wanted to comment to something that Councilmember Barth asked Chief Zaro. Once the hearing began, and people were taking their time, the chair was very clear in her instructions, "You have two minutes," and so, we had to speak directly to the points and not go too far off track. But overall, I, I'm, I'm gonna wait to see now where, where not only 5038 goes, but then Representative Kilduff's, in a sense, companion bill, 1023, no, I'm sorry, 1825 goes as well. That's it.
Very good. Well, thank you, I didn't quite make us out in record time, but I think we had a good discussion tonight. In, in light of the fact that a couple of you guys are gonna go to PCRC for the General Assembly, I'm gonna RSVP, Brianna, to the Major General Barrett Civic Leader Reception, because I think we need to have somebody there, so I'll go to that on Thursday evening, and just let me know what I need to do. A couple of things, just out there listening, the community had a gentleman come up to me today and just want me to check in and see if the My Lakewood 311 app is working, because he allegedly had made several calls on pothole maintenance issues and didn't receive any response back. And this is Corey Campbell, the guy who knows a little bit about cars, the owner of Classy Chassis, so I told him I'd pass it along and see. So, if we got a tool out there, we want to monitor as best we can to make sure people realize it is a tool that's effective, and not just a tool that exists. Couple of things out there in the community, I think we've heard some good stuff from the Police Department, we're doing good work. I am ever-present in my effort and interest to kind of clean up junk around the city. One thing that has kind of popped up, I don't know if it's an issue or should be an issue, there seems to be a little bit of gratis used car lot syndrome over there by America's like credit union, where people are taking advantage of the vacant lot, and just parking cars out there with for-sale signs, so it may be with the permission of the owner, but it's not allowed. So, it may be worth having somebody stop by and say, "Hey, if you want us to ticket these, or tag them, or tell them to go away and stay off your property, happy to do so." Yeah, it's just starting to look a little bit crazy out there. So, that is all I have, I'm looking forward to the event on Thursday night and the rest of the week. If there are no other further comments, we're adjourned.